...of allegiance. Ledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. We have a pretty full agenda this evening, and we're going to start out with approval of the Board of Ed meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the January 9th meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mark. Do I hear a second from somebody? Seconded by Suzie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention from Mike. How about January 23rd? Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So my move.
Moved by Tracy. Second? Seconded by Mike. I mean, Mark. I'm sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention from Mike. Okay. So now we're on to public comment. And we have first up is Susan Collins. Come right up here. Thanks, Susan. Nice to see you.
So my name is Susan Collins. I live in North Wyndham. I'm a...I wanted to talk a little bit about the middle school. So middle school comes...middle school age kids come with a lot of baggage, as I'm sure you all know, anybody who's had them. Puberty, bullying, dating, peer pressure, self-image, figuring out who you are, fear of social rejection. And all of this comes with this...with that age. Parents and teachers get the brunt of it. I'm sure you'll all agree. But it doesn't excuse them from behaving, from common courtesy, from manners, respect for adults and their peers. This behavior should never, never be tolerated. No one in our schools will be able to learn to their fullest potential, and no one will ever be able to teach. The middle school was designed to have four cities within the school, and I know this because I was on the building committee. I know because of lack of funding that that did not happen, because I was on the Board of Ed at that time. But I do know that the middle school recently had three cities, and now they have two. From what I have heard, the three cities approach was working well, and the cities were...and then the cities were reduced, and then an administrator was eliminated. Isn't there a discipline policy that explains what behavior warrants an out-of-school suspension versus an in-school suspension? For this year alone, there has been 142 out-of-school suspensions. That's unacceptable. I don't even think we've had enough. We've had 142 school days yet. There is no in-school suspension room for the middle school, which I would assume that some, hopefully, many of these students would have been suspended...who have...who were suspended would have benefited. When I asked why, they said they had to use the ISS monitor or tutor as a classroom sub. Out-of-school suspension is certainly not helping any of those kids, those 142 kids. Although I hate to say this, but I do think that Dr. Adamowski did have...did do one thing that I really liked. He helped the middle school by...he added a room that had staff, and the kids who would not behave appropriately in school, in the classrooms, and were disrupting the classrooms, those kids had to go to that...to that classroom, and they got their work, and they they did their work there, so that the kids who wanted to learn in the classroom could. I think it's time that we hold students accountable instead of making excuses for their behavior. This is not helping them to become productive members of society, let alone prepared for high school. It's time we teach children from pre-K common courtesy, even if their parents are not teaching that at home. There should be no excuse for this type of behavior in a classroom. I'm speaking about the children who blatantly disrespect teachers and their peers. These children continue their behavior in high school. I believe that good behavior will allow quality instruction to happen for all. We need a behavior plan that is firm, fair, and consistent for all children. Over the last two years, there's a 90% of teacher turnover, which alone should tell you something. The middle school is an embarrassment to our community, and Dr. Garcia, please don't blame this on the teachers or the administration. You've stripped them from their ability to control this issue by taking staff away and not having enough support staff. I believe that this is a crisis. I believe now it's time to implement in all of our schools a behavior modification plan, a zero tolerance plan. I am a member of the School Governance Council at the middle school and the high school. However, I am speaking for myself, a single parent, a grandparent, who had 11 children attend this school system. I've always been one...been one...I've always been one of the school's greatest advocates. Now it's time to toughen up and do what is right for all of the children and all of the teachers in our school system. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next speaker is Kim Swart.
Good evening. My name is Kim Swart. I live in Shetucket Drive in Wyndham, and I'm here tonight in my capacity as the School Governance Council Chair, so not as a mom to the seventh grader at the middle school. So I want to begin by reading a brief statement taken from Connecticut's official state website. "School Governance Councils provide an opportunity for Connecticut schools to engage with families and community members in the essential dialogue about student achievement and preparing all students for success." Essential dialogue, student achievement, and preparing students for success. The middle school council is taking these goals to heart. They seem lofty, and they shouldn't. On February 4th, I informed Dr. Garcia that after careful consideration during our January 28th meeting, the council was not prepared to sign off on the 2019 and 2020 budget. Principal Fiori was very helpful in explaining the budget and answering our questions. We felt strongly that the budget and the proposed staffing model fell short of providing adequate and critical support that is fundamentally necessary for the school to run effectively and efficiently. It is our recommendation that the budget and proposed staffing be amended to include the following positions: an additional fourth administrative position, an assistant principal, or a dean of students. The second is a social worker or a school psychologist. The proposed budget currently has a per pupil expenditure of $11,290.41. This is well below the district's target of $12,880.15. That's a difference of $1,589.74 per student. This number, when multiplied by the projected enrollment of 678, is almost $1.1 million, a significant financial shortfall. This is just not acceptable. Both positions would be more than funded if the targets...excuse me, if the district's target per pupil expenditure was met. By not meeting this target, the school is missing out on two key positions that could directly and positively affect the downward cycle that the school seems to be in. And while these two positions are not the magic bullet, they will hopefully help to eliminate the disruption in the classroom. These are our children. The district is obligated to take care of them. Through no fault of their own, decisions were made that negatively affected them. The available space that they're now confined to has shrunk considerably. Last year's administration turnover, staffing changes, these are creating a perfect storm of educational dysfunction for children that are already vulnerable simply because they're middle schoolers. Their behaviors haven't changed, but with the increased enrollment, the volume and frequency of the behaviors has increased. This will be an area of focus for the council in the coming months, because children are there to learn, and their parents expect them to learn. Yet, when the staff is so overburdened, with constant and daily disruptions in the classroom, everyone loses critical instructional time. Every child is affected. Our children are only at the middle school for three years. Do we really want them to advance to the high school without the critical social and educational skills necessary to get through four years of high school? Our children deserve better. We are here to advocate for them, and we need you to listen. Just a few years ago, the middle school seemed to be on a good track: three cities, four administrators. It was a solid, sustainable plan. What happened? And the disruption is continuing. With Principal Fiori's recent announcement, more administrative changes are coming. This is the 10th in five years. And unlike last year, this year, in accordance with the state mandate, we expect and will play a role in the selection of new permanent administrators. The family and community members of the middle school council are very aware of what a difficult position the middle school teachers and administrators are in when it comes to the council not signing off on the budget. It was not a decision that we made lightly, and was only voted upon by the community and family members of the council. Essential dialogue, student achievement, preparing students for success. We need you to listen, and we...more importantly, we need you to take action. Please consider this recommendation for adding the two positions. That's it. If there are questions, myself, any of the council members that are here will do our best to try to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We're not allowed to engage in back and forth during the public comment, but depending on when we get through public comment, if the board decides to add something to the agenda, or at this meeting, or the next meeting, we'll let you know.
Okay. We'll be here.
Okay, thank you. Third speaker signed up is Sean Nidry.
He's not here.
He's not here? Okay. Well, then we're...is there anybody else? Okay, we're through with public comment then. And we'll start with the superintendent's report.
Sure. We have a couple of reports for tonight. First of all, I want to thank the members, Mrs. Swart for her for her comment. Thank you very much for coming tonight. There's some recognition. I'm not going to go over all of them, but for your information, I don't want to say that North Wyndham School, once again this year, submitted poster to the Connecticut Fair Prevention, and again, were selected. Two students from North Wyndham, and I believe this is like their third or fourth year that North Wyndham gets selected, so congratulations to North Wyndham. The high school have the induction of the National Honor Society in December, where they not put it before, so we want to congratulate the high school. And also, the high schools...couple of high school students, Ellis Philip Galucci, Nathaniel Barbosa, Isabel Perez, and Zaret Salazar visited the middle school last week and presented to the student from the middle school and talked about the high school, and talked about the life of the high school, and did a wonderful, wonderful presentation. So we want to thank those students. And also, you have that Stephanie George, Teacher of the Year. Will be in Willie on Friday morning, at 7:00 in the morning, so hopefully you can listen to her. So these are some of the awards, and I'm not going to go through all of them, because you have the opportunity to read those. The State Department of Education, Attorney General Office, did a visit to the high school and two weeks ago to take a look at the Commission Network Plan, and to take a look at what's been implemented, and to take a look at the four areas, and they're very pleased with the visit, and pleased with how we're following with the plan. And they're coming back again in March to take a look at another walkthrough, give us some feedback, but we're very pleased with the progress that we have made at the high school with the turnaround plan. Mrs. Net...Mr. Desnet and Mrs. Iris White were the two that came and visited. Project AWARE. The federal government came out with a project called Project AWARE, that is a project to implement social and emotional learning in schools. Connecticut is the recipient of that grant, and three school districts have been selected to receive that grant: Nagata, Middletown, and Wyndham Public School. The grant has some stipulation. It's a grant K through 12. The grant must have a project coordinator or a project manager. It is stipulated. The grant is a five-year grant, but it's a grant to work with students and with parents to instill social and emotional. And we have decided that we, since we received the grant with lots of stipulation, that this is a grant that would be extremely beneficial to the middle school, so we'd like to start it at the middle school. So in the process of hiring someone that will work with the state and with the other three districts, and we think this is something that will be extremely beneficial for the middle school to start.
Dr. Garcia, have we used some of the AWARE money for truancy?
We have not used anything from AWARE yet. We have not used that whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
And what you have is the calendar, the first reading of the calendar. As a tradition, the calendar...there's a calendar committee. I want to thank Mr. Albi Harris that led the committee. Thank you, Albi, very much so. I do want to thank Mrs. Drell Inbegato, that also representing a charge part of that committee. And Dr. Yumber, were you in the committee? Were you in the committee? Well, there are lots of people from your area in the committee. So you can see here, they're representative. We have representatives from everything, one of the bargaining units, from secretaries to teachers to administrators, and they meet several times, and they look at the regional calendar, they look at calendar in the district, and then they come up with a calendar, some option that they present to the superintendent, and so these are the options that we selected from the three that they...each one has a pro and a con, but this calendar continued with full six professional days, reduce half-days from four to two, and that was a suggestion from the teachers, continue the early dismissal days to hold teacher-parent conferences, winter break, and also honor the 186 school days per contract.
Are we approving this at the next meeting?
Yes.
May we have a little bit of discussion? Now, or do you want to wait till the next meeting?
I think it's fine if you want to ask some questions or make some suggestions.
I want to know if adding half-days back for the high school for midterms was considered.
Yes, we consider it, but this year, the high school followed the midterm, the schedule that was given to us by the teacher union, so we just...so we didn't put it back. So this year, we follow for the midterm, the schedule that was provided to the district by the teacher themselves.
I would like this board to consider adding back half-days for midterms, because our most academic students are usually involved in sports and other extracurricular, and they are struggling to have their study time. My child being one of them, I don't know if Mia felt the same way, but my child, and I don't know if Ellis felt the same way. We have children in the school, that's why I'm picking on these other two board members. Andrew struggled between swim and studying and six AP or ECE classes right now, which is a lot and probably too much as a bad parent in my part, but that's a lot of work to be able to handle, along with plus going to other classes and possibly getting assignments or work to do. It cut down on his ability to study. Some have jobs outside of school that they have to work to, so this just adds more stress. I don't know how teachers feel about it. I don't know about it from a teacher's point of view, but we're making this building less academic, and that's a problem for me as a parent.
So I do want to...I do want to say again that the schedule that we used for the midterm was the same schedule. Tracy, was the schedule that they gave us, right? It was given to us by the teachers, and one of the principles, one of the changes in that schedule was that students have the opportunity to go and meet with teachers, to go over what they need to study, and have study session with teachers. So the new schedule that was presented to us that we follow was the schedule given to us by the teacher union, and that schedule, the change in that schedule was that students don't have the opportunity to go and meet with teachers, to spend some time to go over and to do review. That was not done in the past.
That schedule was given to you as a reaction to taking the half-days away?
Right.
Right. I'm looking at this from a student's point of view. What's best for the adults, what's best for the administration, not my problem. What's best for our students, and what makes them more academic, and what makes them better able to prepare for their exams is what I'm concerned with right now. The half-days were cut, the teachers' union, I'm assuming, gave you that proposed schedule to accommodate full days. Half-days, in my opinion, are what's best for the academics of our students.
So we do want...I do want to say also that students that needed support from teachers during those half-days went and met with teachers, and there were teachers doing reviews to help students. And so all students are different, and there are students that are AP students that may don't need that support, but there are students that do need to meet with teachers and do need that support. And so teachers use that time to meet with the students and support the students and do review with students.
That has never not happened before. Teachers have always done a midterm prep, leading up in the days coming to it. They've always made themselves available before and after the exams. I had two older children who went through this and who have always had teacher support in this building. That's not my concern. My concern is that the kids who are really trying, and are academically trying to achieve, are being short-changed, and the statement was last time, not all the kids are going to go and study. That shouldn't affect the children who really are, the students who really are. Thank you.
So I think, you know, you made a suggestion that we consider. We're not going to take action on it tonight, but that's been put out on the table, and if there's any more information that people would like brought to us before we do make a decision about this, please let me know, so that I can make sure that those questions or suggestions are addressed. Elde had her hand up, and then Mike.
I remember last year when we voted to take away the half-days, the teachers weren't happy, so maybe they're just going by the schedule that they have. So maybe if we ask them again, because even Mia came home and said, "Oh, the teachers said that you guys took it away from us."
Well...
Meaning you Board of Ed members took it away from us.
It was a negotiated...my understanding, my recollection is that it was a negotiated compromise, I think. So it's still...I mean, as I said to Tracy's comments, if people want to bring this up and, you know, take action on it differently...
May I ask a question?
Yes.
To Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris, I know you led the committee. The high school was put in the committee. Did they bring this up in the committee meeting? Or they didn't bring it up?
They brought it up very late.
Okay.
When we reviewed. Remember, we had three different calendar options.
Yeah.
So, but there was also the agreement that I understood from working with the teachers' union.
Mike, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah. Well, my question would be, before we, you know, if we're going to vote on this or whatever in the next meeting, could we also look at any transportation issues with the other schools and everything, you know, half-days with the high school?
How does it sync up, you mean, with the other schools?
Right.
Okay.
And, you know, if there is an effect, if any.
This is a regional calendar now? You were gone for a couple of years, and we switched over to a regional calendar. So all of the schools in the East Conresk have a version of this calendar, like, they all got the same version, and then they adapted it to fit their district. So it's kind of a regional calendar now, but you can make changes like half-days for PD or something like that as you need to. Murphy?
So I...I'm sympathetic to Tracy's point that the...that the priority ought to be the education of the students rather than the convenience of the teachers, but I have a question about exactly what kinds of assessments were...there's a...there seems to be a package of different kinds of assessments that we're doing, some computerized and some not, and I wonder if the whole concept of midterm exams isn't a little bit on the obsolete side. So if we're going to talk about this, it might be in the context of exactly how often should we test children and students, and how...and how should they be tested? You know, my question...I taught for 43 years, and I gave up on exams entirely. There, you know, in the real world, nobody asks you to take all your books off your desk and pull out a pencil and answer a series of questions, and there are other ways of assessing whether students are learning. And in fact, we use a number of ways to assess whether students are learning. So the question is, how much assessing do we need to do? Do we really need to have midterm exams at all? They're stressors on students, and it's a question about are they really contributing to how much they actually learn?
Right now, they're 20% of their grade.
Well...
Semester, and ECE classes require a midterm and a final through UConn. There are other ways to do a midterm and a final.
Actually, ECE is one...since I worked at the university, the ECE is a university program. That's not strictly true. It is possible to avoid exams in those courses. There's a certain amount of rigmarole that you have to go through in order to do it.
Well, I would...
The question still remains, it might make more sense for us to take a look at the whole testing thing, rather than just pick on, you know, midterm exams and how their schedule is, and pull that out of the whole package.
That's a whole big discussion, you know, that has a lot going into it, that's much bigger than the calendar. If the board would like to have that discussion, I'm happy to have that discussion. We're not going to have it here right now.
No.
But it does affect all sorts of things, much more than the calendar even. So what is the pleasure of the board to...on this topic?
Meaning moving the...moving for the calendar for the next meeting? I'd like to move that we add half-days back in for midterms.
Well, I don't think we need to make that motion now. I mean, I put it down that...and I said verbally, there's been a request put on that we consider that when we take action, but on this issue of...that Murphy has raised about midterms, that's a whole big, different kind of discussion, and one that I don't know that we'll be prepared to resolve at our next meeting when we take action on the school calendar, but it could be a longer-term discussion as we move forward with planning for future years. Mary?
I would just like to say I'd hesitate to, you know, put it...the onus upon us to decide what types of exams or the way the academic year should be organized. I'm not sure midterms are obsolete. That is a different type of discussion. I do think with high school students, there need to be some check-ins. I agree that there are other types of assessments that may be too much. So, I mean, at this point, I would say we shouldn't really be telling teachers. That's more of an academic argument. That's a conversation. I'm not sure how that's done.
Mary, I do...I do think that if we went down the road to have that conversation, we'd have to get information from more than just people sitting around this table. So, so maybe we should just hold it for now, and I'd be happy to hear from board members after this meeting if this is something you'd like to have a more full discussion of at some point, and then we'll figure out when and how we can do that. But when we do take action on the school calendar for next year, which will be at the next meeting, which would be the second reading, I can't imagine that we could do more than make any adjustments, as maybe suggested by Tracy, but I don't think...the whole idea of what we do about midterms is something we need a lot more discussion on if we're going to do it.
I do have a question on the calendar.
Please let me know what you think.
I have a question about the calendar. Why do we have 11 days for winter break?
Oh, that's another...Albi, do you want to explain that much better than I do?
Do we need a mic for you?
Yes, you need a microphone.
Because the public can't hear you over there.
No? Brendan? Okay. When the committee met to look at winter break, we really focused on two things, both Christmas and January 1st are on Wednesdays, and so that would have brought students back on a Thursday and Friday for two days. We went back and looked at attendance for the past year that we just had, and district-wide, 30% of the students across all of our schools missed at least one day. Some missed two, some missed three. So that puts us very behind with our attendance, and all of our schools are working very hard to improve attendance. So the committee felt that bringing...having school on those two days, our attendance rates would be very low, and that, once again, puts us behind. And so the feeling was that we would have that break, and the only reason why is because Christmas is on the 25th, and January 1 is...both are on Wednesdays, and that is unique to this year. Next year, it'll change. So it was really because of the attendance the previous year. We looked at the data and showed just tremendous absences. Once again, it was 30% district-wide.
And then Three Kings Day?
Three Kings Day is no students, but that's a professional development day on that Monday, the 6th.
If I may, to what Mr. Harris said, this year, in addition to the committee, the committee is the one that developed the calendar and sent a recommendation, but in addition to the committee, because of the...because of the timing of the holidays, I decided to have the principal discuss the calendar with the teachers, and have the teachers in the schools send me their feedback of what calendar they suggest. So each school suggested the calendar, and overwhelmingly, this calendar that is suggested to you tonight was the one that was suggested by the teachers.
Okay.
And this is the first time that I have done it, but just because of the timing, we put it out there to all the teachers.
The teachers are hoping the sugar is out of their system by the 7th when they come back.
Any other questions about this before we move on? Nope. Okay, so we're on to discussion items, even though that was a discussion. We do have a budget, a budget...a working discussion on the budget, but because the offer was made by Kim Swart when she spoke that they would be available to answer questions, my question to the board is, does anybody want to make a motion to add that to the agenda? Or shall we ask...I mean, does anybody have any questions?
I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda a conversation with the middle school SGC.
Okay, and you want to do that?
Second that.
Before the budget workshop or after the budget workshop?
Under discussion items, can we make it a pre...whatever, pre-A would be?
A-1?
Well, pre-A, so that way, if they don't want to sit through the budget workshop, they don't have to, or we can do the budget workshop.
Okay. So a motion's been made to add an item to the... Okay, so, motion's been made to add an item to the, um, discussion items, which would be A-one, uh, Q and A with school, Wyndham Middle School, School Governance Council. Could I hear a second on that?
I seconded it.
Seconded by Murphy. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Well, unanimous. Did you vote, Susie?
I did.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, I don't know who wants to come up to the table and, you know, field questions.
How many are here?
How many from the School Governance Council are here? Oh, we have a whole bunch of you. Well, uh, you could pull chairs up and take, you know, take questions, or come assist Kim if she wants you to. I defer, right, I defer to you to call on somebody else to come up if you need them to, okay?
Can I just, maybe somebody, just in case we can't answer questions, just make sure we capture it? Thank you.
So, appreciate you coming and sharing your, um, well-thought-out, uh, suggestions and observations with us. And I'm gonna open it up discuss, to discussion and questions from the board, knowing that this may be an ongoing thing that we need to deal with. It may not be the only time we have a discussion, but there may be some things that the board wants to consider in the context of the budget. So, um, who would like, anybody have anything they wanna ask? Tracy, go ahead.
Kim, what was the catalyst that brought you guys here tonight? I understand it's a budgetary concern, but specifically, the conversation or the back and forth with what I'm assuming would be your principal, 'cause that's who you guys have to deal with, to get you here tonight, the requests that you're looking for specifically, and what the response was to it, and what you'd like to see come out of tonight?
Yeah, so, I'll take a stab at answering, but, uh, most everybody that's here was at that meeting, the January twenty-eighth meeting. So, um, many of us that are serving on the council at the middle school have been on previous councils. So, myself, I came out of Wyndham Center School, so we all are very aware that part of our task is to sign up on the budget. And, um, you know, personally, back at the Wyndham Center School, we spent a lot of time really diving into the budget, making sure we understood previous years, understood what the new ask was, you know, how was enrollment going to change? How could that affect the staffing models? But I think layered on top of that has been simmering in our meetings, um, concern over what we've been hearing, certainly on the streets personally, um, some things that have been made very public in different forums about concerns at the middle school. So, we, we started talking about, you know, really what has changed, and, and the meeting focused a lot on, you know, Principal Fiore was there, yes, um, she had a number of staff members that were there as well, so they all participated in the discussion. And, you know, it really just seemed like the, the changes from the administration, not so much the cities, you know, going from three to two, but that the, that the lack of having an additional administrator took away the flexibility for the principal to really, um, delegate the tasks that were needed to be done at the school. Um, it just, they just didn't have as many options. So, you know, and we thought that, and that's why the way we positioned this was two, two different types of positions, even though there's really two. So, an assistant principal versus a dean of students, the, you know, they're both very different. So, we would expect, you know, for conversation to be held with the, the, you know, school to determine what made the most sense. Similarly, from a school psychologist versus a, um, thank you, social worker, will know what the differences are, what are the benefits one over the other, 'cause each has its merits. So, I, I don't know that there was really one thing, Mrs. Lambert, I think it was really just, um, we were concerned, especially when we looked at the, the perpugal, perpugal expenditure. I mean, you know, why was, you know, using, I think, a number of like six hundred to do this when we know that the, right now, this, the enrollment is, I think, at six sixty-five?
Six fifty-five, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not, it's not unheard of for it to be at six seventy-eight. So, really, when you looked at those numbers, I mean, that alone just kind of shocked us, um, and we felt strongly that we needed to address that, and then just based on feedback from everybody else. So, is there anything else people wanna share from that discussion that makes sense to this that I didn't cover?
I think you're doing a good job.
Well, thanks, but I mean, they were all there, so if there's, you know, things they wanna jump in and add.
Yeah, feel free, feel free, if you wanna come up to the table and say, add anything. Okay. Okay. Mary, is there anything you wanna ask?
Well, I'll, I'll give a couple of questions. How many principals are there, principal and assistant? And are you saying that there is no social worker and no school psychologist?
There, there is one school psychologist on staff, and feel to correct me if I'm not right about that, but that's what I believe is the case. And there is currently, um, Principal Fiore, and then they have Dr. Santi and Dr. Ware. So, and that's it. So, there was three assistants last year, so, you know, that's gonna be changing, so.
And there is a school-based health center that has a social worker.
Sue, if you're gonna, Susan, if you're gonna talk, you have to come up to the mic, 'cause the public can't hear.
Go ahead, come up to the mic. You've never been shy and retiring before.
I know, but the public.
Borrow the mic off the end, borrow the mic off the end of the table, so you have two.
You know, I was just gonna say that, uh, I chair the school-based health center meetings, and the social work, they're, they're very much overwhelmed in there, with the social workers, very overwhelmed, because there's not enough support staff in that school. And I think, this was my first meeting as a, as a, getting onto this, uh, middle school, School Governance Council. And, um, you know, I've always said, even when I was on the board, that I felt that our weakest link was that middle school and the stress, and the age, age is a difficult age, as we all know. But I think it was pretty clear to me at that time at that meeting that it's a crisis, that schools in crisis. And the amount of kids who need support and need help is just overwhelming compared to how many people are there to help them. So, I know that the social worker, um, at the school-based health center is doing quite a bit of work and being asked to come out of the school-based health center to support, um, the amount of children and kids that need, need support. And there's just not enough support.
Mary, did you have another question?
Well, I mean, that, uh, it just seems unbelievable to me, because it's really, you know, if you think of all the elementary schools feeding in, and, uh, you know, it seems inadequate. Also, I had, I have had questions about outsourcing, you know, this Camino Alto, I don't really know what it is, but I don't know why we're not really focused. I, I think this is a product, this crisis of not having the sufficient staff. And, um, the discussion about special ed last meeting, I felt was not adequate to questions I had. And I, I think now I'm hearing that this is very much, um, very troubling, and the issue of climate and the safety of students and the staff, and the teachers also not getting support, you know, um, it's, it's very troubling.
Do you have any question, another question at all?
Well, I don't know.
You're just making it, okay.
Yeah.
Then, if you give, anybody else have anything they wanna ask? Yes, Ilde?
When did it turn to two cities from three to two?
Last year, but, yeah, this, this school year, the end of last year.
Why do they do that? I thought three was working good.
Administrator.
If something's working, why?
Well, wait, 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 we can't have three people answering, answering at once. So, Ilde's asked the question, why did we go from three to two? Well, the answer was this year, but.
Can I answer that question?
Yes, go ahead then.
Okay, so, so the middle school was a commissioned network school. And a commissioned network school, by the way, your concern is very valid, and also, I'm gonna tell you the reason why I think the middle school should have another administrator, yes. At that time, it had only five hundred and twenty-three students as a commissioned network. The commissioned network grant is gone. The middle school today has six hundred and fifty-five students. Sixty-five today, no, fifty-five or sixty-five?
Sixty-five.
We did not anticipate, we did not anticipate that growth at the middle school that we would have. So, middle school have over a hundred students that we anticipated. So, based on that, we think, and I've been thinking, that they should have another administrator, because they have gone to over a hundred students. When we made this decision, they had five twenty-five, because the decision was made three years, no, three years ago, not last year, because I would face in. But today, they have six fifty-five. So, based on that information, we should be able to revisit a decision that was made three years ago.
That's why it's relevant to be having these concerns brought forward while we're having the budget discussions.
And I do support another administrator with six hundred and fifty-five kids at the middle school.
And it's, and it's very good for the public who is watching this, and we have a member of the Board of Finance here today, too, not to put you on the spot, Josh, but, um, it's good for you, for people to know, uh, structurally, what we need to support our schools. It's not just a matter of cut, 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 and then hoping that we get good results from it, so.
No, and, and I think that, you know, a big part of the discussion was our concern around behaviors, and I think some of the statistics that Susan mentioned, you know, we specifically asked for some numbers, you know, because there's some definitely mixed feelings about the effectiveness of, um, you know, the behavioral model that's applied today. You know, and when you look at the numbers year over year, you know, you, somebody has to stop and say, you know, why is that? What, what has changed, and how effective is the restorative practices, you know, being used? Is it, is it how we're applying it, or is it just simply not effective? You know, and, you know, I realize in some ways this is like a cruise ship, right, that it's going to take a, a long time to change, but, you know, we can't keep, we can't keep discussing, discussing. And I think one of the things that, you know, we really heard, um, too, was when something, you know, when something gets put in place, there needs to be the support model that's going to be there for more than a year and a half, two years to do it, because if something doesn't immediately turn around, you know, there's a sense a little bit that, okay, well, let's try something else, and, you know, there's no continuity there, there's no way to actually see that it's, it can be effective. So, you know, I think when you kind of put all of these things together, you know, there's, you know, when I walked out of that meeting, my head was spinning a little bit, because I just felt like there was so much that needed to be tackled at that middle school. And honestly, you know, I don't want the School Governance Council to be ineffective, I want them to be, I want them to be, um, effective. But you can't bite off everything and expect to do a good job. So, you know, we felt like right now, our immediate concern has to be addressing the budget issue. We, and I, in the statement, I said, we are going to be looking at the behaviors, um, the, you know, they are concerning to us. And, um, you know, as a little bit of a sidebar, you know, as a parent of a seventh grader, um, you know, I, I am concerned with my, sometimes my son being in there. So, um, you know, I think it's something that we have to, we have to look pretty closely at. So, you know, the feedback at the, from the school that day certainly led us to believe that these two positions were the right ones, too.
Oh, you're fine, stay right there. So, I'm on the SGC, my name is Joanne Haddad. I live, um, Lauter Avenue, Willimantic, and Philip Lauter Avenue, there's two Lauter Avenues, so. And, um, I'm in a precarious position, because I'm on the SGC as a committee member, I mean, as a community member, excuse me. And like Susan, I, my first meeting was just in January, so it was, it was like a whirlwind all at once. And Dr. Garcia and I have had several, several conversations about what, what I feel or what we feel is needed at the middle school. And when it does come to the whole behavior piece and the discipline piece, you know, the way I see this, and, and it, this is my, kind of my educated opinion and my mom opinion. There's two approaches in education, in my belief, when it comes to how a school is run. One of them is the belief that if you have good curriculum and instruction, great teachers, behavior will follow. And another is, if you have, if you put your focus on the behavior plan, good curriculum and instruction is, is, you, you enable good curriculum instruction, you, you've given it an opportunity. Because without classrooms of ready learners, you can't teach anything, no matter how good the curriculum is. And we have great, we have some of the best teachers in Connecticut, we have great curriculum and instruction. I just would love to see a, a more open opportunity for it to be offered. And in order to do that, my belief is, in Wyndham, maybe not in Greenwich, or in Ellington, or in many other districts, you can't, I don't believe we should be following strictly the good curriculum and instruction, behavior will follow. We need a good behavior plan in Wyndham so that we can enable good curriculum and instruction, because we've got that, we've got it, we've got everything we need. Now, let's set the table so we can offer what we have. And, and in order to do that, I, I agree, I believe we need to go back to having three assistant principals, because they are typically the disciplinarians. I think there needs to be a unified administrative team at the middle school that are on the same page, that speak the same language, um, and have a united front where that's concerned. And I believe it can happen, and we can turn this around in no time at all. But once again, if we choose a model, one hundred percent valid data needs to happen after three years minimum. We have to stick with something. It's like cleaning a messy house, it's gonna get worse before it gets better, and we have to stick with it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a lot on our agenda, I think we've heard pretty clearly what the request is. But is there anybody else on the board who has a question or a comment? Yes, uh, Murphy had his hand up first, then Mike.
Well, first, I'd, I'd like to thank the, uh, members of the Governance Council for, when that law was passed some years ago, and, um, I was chairing the Policy Committee at the time, and the policy came up and said, regardless of whether we, whether it was required under the law or not, we're gonna put it in every school we have, because it is a way of getting a community involved with the schools. And I've been waiting for something like this to, to happen, the more that you all get.
I was not passing the budget?
Well, no, the more that you all are engaged, the better it is for the schools. And, um, you're certainly right that the middle school is under-resourced. I don't have any doubt about that. The problem that we have here, as our Director of Finance pointed out some while ago, is that if our costs are going up at three percent a year, and our budgets are going up at one and a half percent a year, uh, we're gonna get squeezed out of something somewhere. And so, we are in some ways looking at a zero-sum game. If we.
Or negative.
Yeah, well, you're losing ground when you, or keep getting one for three. But, um, yeah, it's like, like in basketball, if the other team is shooting threes, and you're shooting twos, and they're hitting them, and you're hitting them, you're still gonna lose. But, um, if we add, uh, resources to the middle school, they have to come from somewhere. Or we have to get more money put in the budget. And the only way to get more money put in the budget is to get more people to show up and vote at the referendum. And, and the, the numbers are, what, eleven or twelve percent of registered voters in this town show up at referendum. And the last time I looked at the numbers, the average age of a referendum voter was around sixty, which suggests that we need to expand our, uh, community awareness and get more parents involved and actually, not only saying that the school needs more resources, but appearing at the polls in May and voting for them. Because we can recommend it, the Board of Finance, uh, and the Board of Finance will, will look at it, and unless they think that the voters will vote for it, we're not gonna get past the Board of Finance. And even if the Board of Finance understands the, the reality and the logic, and says, well, let's give it a try, if the voters won't vote for it, you know, that, that's where we are this year. We put it, last year, we put up a three and a half percent budget, we got one point three five percent. And that's one of the reasons why we're sitting here squeezed. The other problem, of course, is, uh, the commissioners' network, middle school was a commissioners' network school. It got funded, extra funding from the state. It worked, but the extra funding went away. And if the extra, if the town doesn't pick up where the extra funding disappeared, then you get kind of back to where you were before you tried this in the first place. It's kind of sad that when you have something that works, you can't keep doing it.
Yeah, there, there's no doubt that, um, there's, there's challenges here, and I certainly am not going to be in a position to, you know, articulate what, what the answer would be. Certainly, mine's far smarter than mine. But what you're saying is not anything new to any of us on the School Governance Council. You know, many people like myself are out, you know, countless times leading up to the vote. I attended a meeting last week, um, you know, held, I'm thrilled that we're looking to do something sooner rather than later this year. You know, we're not in April trying to, okay, what are we going to do? And we brainstormed different ideas. You know, maybe that will be different this year, um, but unfortunately, it is what it is. This is what this town is like. You know, I, I think to some extent, it's a little unfair to put the burden, um, which it sounded a little bit like you were doing on a school governance councils, to drum up community involvement, um, because we try very hard. The PTOs try very hard. We personally try to make sure that our social network is well-aware of where, what our position is and to engage the people that we think can be the, the sway, right, to, to tip the scale. You know, but we just can't do it alone. So, you know, again, this is the town, this is what we have to deal with, so. So, you know, maybe the, the meeting that was held last week will yield some different results this year. We'll, we'll just have to wait and see.
One more question from Mike.
It wasn't a question, I just, a request that we, that I get the numbers again, because the per pupil expenditures that they were talking about are way different than the per pupil expended, the per pupil numbers averaged for this district that I have. So, I'd like to see that and see where the...
You'd like to see a breakdown of that?
I'd like to see a breakdown of that.
Okay, we can make sure we get that. Oh, another question from Mark.
Another question. Well, first off, I, I have to say that I appreciate the, the Governance Council coming, and I certainly appreciate the concerns they, they bring forth. And it makes sense that we look hard at, at that sort of budget. But it, it continues to bring up a, a, a problem for me that I've had since joining the Board in August. We don't get the data. We don't have, I don't know what budget she's talking about. I haven't seen the budget. Clearly, we missed the, the Board missed the boat somewhere along the line when we switched from three to two cities, because some board members didn't know we did that. We may have lost the Governor's Commission money, but we didn't, I guess, attempt to replace it. We just decided we're going to cut the budget, go down to two cities, and move an administrator. What I'm saying is that, what I'd like to see is, is the budget that they're, that they're even talking about, because it would seem to me that we need to support both positions, not just one. And we certainly need to see some changes, but I'm dying here for lack of data. I don't have any hard figures on almost anything put forth to me in the last three months. And I don't mean as a blanket combination, but we need to see this budget. We need to see some hard data here, so I know what's going on. So, we know the, I agree with Mike, we know the pupil cost is, if it's way off, then I need to know why, so.
Okay.
I support their request, and I'm making a definite request that we actually get some hard data.
Am I correct in assuming that that will be something you'll contact Principal Fiorian to obtain, or...
That's not your responsibility.
Okay, I want to make sure if there's a deliverable for us.
No, this is something that we can get from Central Office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one more question?
Yes.
When I was listening to Kim's conversation, you can either have a social worker or a psychologist, but you can't have both? Is that what was presented to you?
Well, I mean, heck, if you could give us both, that would be great.
Well, no, I agree with what Susan says.
But no, I think the conversation around what we, we had was one or the other. You know, there was a lot of discussion about why one might be better than the other. I am not going to be in a position to try to articulate that. One of the members on our council is Paula Erickson. She is a special ed from the middle school, so, you know, she had an awful lot of input on what she thought was the right thing. So, you know, and unless my fellow council members feel differently, I would think that this would be something that we'd have to take up with the school to see what really is the best choice of those to, for that need, and to do what Joanne said, to really stick with a three-year plan. You know, I, I don't know enough about what would be, you know, one better than the other.
Last year, last year, if I may, we had a whole conversation about cutting an administrator from the middle school and going down to three cities. And I said that that was a bad idea because when our children were at the middle school, there was two, it was broken up differently, and the behavior was horrendous. And the best way to invest our money right now is to correct these behaviors when they're at the middle school, before they get to the high school. Because year after year, the high school teachers say, "Behaviors this year are a little worse than last year, a little worse." And then there's always a group that's a lot worse than the previous year. And I'm not going to break it down by year, but it always goes that they're getting worse, they're getting worse. And so, that then makes the behaviors and the discipline and the academics in this building even worse than what they were the previous year, because we're not nipping it in the bud at the middle school. I'm for a little bit stronger than, you know, restorative practices, but Dr. Garcia said that the middle school was the most trained in restorative practices when she had all of that. So, if this is the building with the most training and the most willingness to implement it, it's falling on its face. And I hate to be the knee-jerk reaction, but behavior is a huge part of their academics. My two oldest kids couldn't wait to get out of the middle school because the behaviors were so bad.
Can I say one thing to them real quick, real quick? And again...
You need to come up to the mic, please, because the members of the public watching on TV can't hear you.
Absolutely.
And then I, then I think we're going to wrap it up, okay?
Okay, yes. And again, we've had this conversation as well, and, you know, restorative practices is out there, you've got PBIS that we used to have. I personally am about an assertive discipline policy. I've spoken with my Assistant Superintendent about one that, that, another one that's out there that's similar. I don't believe there's any one discipline plan out there, one philosophy out there that should stand alone. Again, there, there are pieces to restorative practices that are wonderful, the language piece to it, and the conversations with kids, and restoring people to their whole selves in the end is an, is an excellent. But to me, that's common sense, and I think we've done restorative practices for years using assertive discipline. So, I just do want to put out there that, that while restorative practice is a wonderful program, there are others out there, too, that I, I really think they need to be mixed with a, an overarching umbrella of common sense, and we can get this middle school in top shape. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the, the School Governance Council coming out. I just want to, like, say, as somebody who was Chair of the Board of Finance for a number of years, it is also very important, when it comes time to, for them to hear about the needs of the Board budget, that it, we may need you to come, like, make the case for some spending at levels that they may not want to see from us, so.
Fair enough.
Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, now we're on to the Budget Workshop, Part Two. And at the beginning of this, I want to say, this is just a workshop. It's not a proposal or a final budget. And so, anything that we talk about today is, is not final until we decide on our final budget that we're presenting to the Board of Finance. So, I hope everybody, including the press that's here, will take that to heart. Thank you. Is, is anybody coming up to the table with us?
No, Kristen Reader here, so I don't know. Kristen, read it if you can.
Do either one of you or both of you want to come to the table so you're near Mike?
Want to come?
There's a seat, you can bring a seat next to Mike, and there's also a seat next to Mary over there.
I didn't get the handout. I have the old one.
They need two down there.
We don't, Mark and I each have one.
Who needs one? Mary?
Mary.
Okay.
Chris, there's a place there. Rita, Rita, there's a place next to Mike, just pull a chair up.
Rita can sit over there with Chris.
Oh.
Oh, that's probably right there, yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
Are you going to be, you know, presenting?
Yeah, I can talk from here.
Okay. No, I'm just going to...
Yep, Rita.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so, looking at efficiencies in the, in the, in the system, we started at the first scenario, again, these are scenarios, we started at 9.2, Scenario 1 and Scenario 2, 7.6. When the team look at the, the budget, and when we look at programs and impact, as you can see, even in Scenario 3, we have not touched a classroom. We're staying away from the classroom as much as possible. So, we're looking in Scenario 3, looking at efficiencies, how we can look at efficiency by using technology, by using our chromos, by using timekeeping, by looking at attrition, et cetera, et cetera. But we have stayed far away from the classroom so far. Going back to grants, looking at what we can get in grants. And so, you have a list of things here in Scenario 3 that we're looking, that can be efficiencies in the system and staying away from the classroom. I'm not going to go through all of them. I want to have you take a look at them and tell me if you have any question for, for any of these.
Dr. Garcia, can we, can we be fair at least? So, attrition of three tutors means you're not replacing them?
Right, so they're not, so, right now, they're not using them. We spoke to the principal. If that changed, they can tell us, but right now, they told us, that's fine.
Okay, so, in some buildings, there's a building sub who has left and now is not being replaced, and you're taking tutors to cover that position.
Okay, so, so, hold on for a second, let me explain myself. So, let me go through the process. The budget process is not done by Dr. Garcia. The principal comes and make their request. So, for example, the middle school, one of their requests was to have lunch monitor. We said, yes. So, everybody bring their requests, and they put their requests and what they want. Nacha request was, et cetera, et cetera. So, everybody bring their requests and justify their, their requests. Some positions have gone vacant during the year, have not been used. And when they don't use those positions, seem like there's not a need for those positions. If they have not used a position from the beginning of the year till now, there is a reason why they have not used those positions. So, in some, in some schools, they said, "We don't want this position, we want another position," et cetera, et cetera. So, I don't, I think, I know the school that you're referring to, but they have not made their requests to replace that position for next year. I think every building that we have have a building sub. Every building that we have have a building sub. And for next year, we do have those positions in the budget. We have not eliminated the building sub from those budget positions. They are in the budget. The reason for that building is for now, between now and a couple of months, we're looking at how we can put a freeze on some issues, but the position has not been eliminated from the budget.
So, you're telling me in a district that has the test scores that we have and the issues that we have, we don't need tutors? We don't need three tutors?
No, I did not say that, Mrs. Lambert. I did not say that. I did not say that. That's not correct. I did not say that. I'm saying if you have not used that position, if you have not used that position, where is a tutor here, secretaries?
Three tutors. Above secretary, attrition of three tutors. We have some of the lowest test scores in this area and, and middle of our DURC, which is not acceptable to me. If we aren't using the tutors, then what are the principals doing wrong?
Well, let me say...
Why have we assigned them somewhere else?
Exactly.
Okay, and hold, let me...
Okay. We can't have, we can't have everybody talking at each other, over each other, so one person at a time. I think there's a, a very good question that's been put on the table about if we have attrition of three tutors, regardless of whether or not a principal or a school is using them, can we afford to have that resource slip through our fingers?
Right. So, the, the other part I will answer is in context. Okay, some schools have more than three tutors, some schools have six tutors or seven tutors. So, not every school have the same amount of tutor. That's number one. Number two, the tutors have been in place and we still have the same test score. So, I think we have to look at not only, how we use them appropriately. I don't think it's the numbers, but how we use them appropriately. And some positions have been vacant so far. Some tutors' positions have been vacant. So, not all the positions going to be eliminated, but there have been some vacancies in tutor positions during the school year.
I think the question that's being asked, though, is can we afford to have those vacancies?
Well, I think depending on some schools, I would say the Nacha, maybe, not, because Nacha will need it. I think depending on what school you're looking at. In some schools, they do have the amount sufficient of tutor that they need. For example, the high school has a tremendous amount of tutors.
Okay.
So, some schools, if only have one or two, for example, if you ask Ms. Sweeney right now, I would say, no, Sweeney only has two tutors, so they do not, they need to keep their tutors.
So, we're talking about attrition, we're talking about what buildings are removing the tutors from, from attrition? I'm not asking if you're going to fire anybody, or RIF or anybody, or anything like that. Which buildings are...
I know one of the buildings was a high school. I know one was a high school. I don't know.
Okay, so, the high school has slipping scores, we're struggling to get our students up, we have some of the highest needs in this building, and we're going to let a tutor go, which, once these things come out, let me finish, please, once these things come out of our budget, they never come back in. The budget gets lower and lower and lower, they never come back in, so we'll never get this back. With Camino Altos here and all the other programs we have here, special ed and everything, we don't have a need for a tutor in this building. I find that unbelievably hard to believe, and this is a direct thing in the classroom. It's not not touching the students, like we said in the last meeting. This is affecting the...
The tutor, can I, the tutor of the high school has been replaced with two positions. We have included in the budget a reading interventionist and a math interventionist for the high school. That position is higher pay than a tutor.
Right.
A tutor does a bachelor degree, an interventionist is a certified teacher. So, what we're saying is that we have included two additional positions for the high school at a higher level, at the reading and at the math interventionist position.
So, this really isn't a cut, then?
Well, we have, we included those positions from the grant. We have taken those positions from another source to put into high school. So, for example, so the tutor, a teacher, we have given him two more teachers, a reading interventionist and a math interventionist.
Through a grant.
But not a, don't they do different things than a tutor?
Well, the interventionist is much more skillful than the tutor. The interventionist is a teacher. The interventionist is exactly what we need to provide intervention to students and whatever students are missing in those particular skills.
Excuse me. Is there any way that...
Wait, Ilda, you, you're not next. It's Mike, and then Murphy, and then Ilda, so, can you hold?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Please.
So, Tracy's point brings up, I, now I'm a little confused in what's going on, because we, we did say that we weren't going to touch the classroom, and that was one thing that I, I believe the Board unanimously, unanimously talked about, you know, we weren't going to do it. So, in, in my opinion here, that there's some administration that's misusing the staff if we're not going, if we're not utilizing them. And the other thing is, I, I've looked at all these scenarios, and there's nothing trimmed in, in Central Office.
Because we took that in Scenario 1 and 2.
Okay, then...
This is, this is continual cutting from Scenario 1.
Right, I, I just, I, I just don't like to see, you know, the cuts from there. And it, and if these interventionists are more than the tutors, then it's, like Tracy said, it's, it's not a cut. So, I'm kind of wondering how we're doing this and lowering the percentage.
Because we added the interventionists already in the request for staffing. So, the request for staffing is already put in this budget. We adding the request for staffing. So, we put the interventionist in the, in the request for staffing already.
How would we know that?
It's in the, it's in the first page.
We had that at the last meeting.
Second page of the budget.
It's from last meeting's budget packet? This one, the position request?
Right.
New staffing request. There's the one reading interventionist, and then there's another position in reliance grant.
The math interventionist, right.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so, Mike, just to make sure...
She just showed me.
Okay, okay. Rita just showed you. What page are you looking at, just so people can know?
Scenario 1, the new position request? At the very front of this.
Scenario 1 of the one we have tonight.
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
So, there, there are other decreases, too.
So, under the new position request, the 439,128, that's included in there?
Yes, new position request.
It's carried forward to that Scenario 3, the additional person.
Right.
So, Mike, do you have a, I think you have more questions?
There's still, there's still the paraprofessional on here. It just seems, we're just, we're just dipping into an area that I, I thought we weren't going to at all go into.
Let me just say, any of these cuts, any of these, these...
Changes.
Things that are being suggested, the Board does not have to accept, too. This is just a scenario that's put out there. These are suggested ways you get to that scenario. The Board could, in the course of discussion tonight, give more guidance to the Superintendent and the Finance Department to come back with some different options for us, okay? So, feel free to suggest those things if you want to in the course of the discussion. I don't want to put anybody on the spot right now, but I know there are a couple more people who had questions. One was Murphy, and the next was Ilda, so...
I'll let Ilda go first.
Okay.
Thank you. So, my question is, is there any way this Scenario 3 could be broken down a little bit? Like, what...
What would you like to know?
Reduce professional development. Where? What does that mean, reduced professional development?
So you're asking for more explanation under each of these line items?
Yes, more explanation.
What school, or what, where is this happening?
The reduce and PD would be from the going from four to two days of half days of professional development.
Yes, but there's more than that, though.
So-
Is there any way he could explain to us each of them?
No, I can, I can explain that one. So we want to go and use internal consultant, I mean more local Connecticut consultant versus a consultant from outside. So that will give us a saving, instead of using people that coming from outside that have to travel from other companies, we want to go ahead and use more people locally from Connecticut.
Rather than pay them travel.
Travel and things like that, right.
So the secretaries, reduction, we're losing four secretaries? Or they're retiring?
We are, we're looking at two that will retire soon.
But we'd have to reduce. There would be four fewer secretaries, though.
Right, yeah.
Whether or not they're fired or they go by attrition. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And one more. The reduction due to course request?
The high school is looking at that, we put that in there, the high school. So we gave the high school some new staffing. The high school has some new staffing, and so, but they're looking at, based on the course request that they're working on the schedule, there may be two position that they will not need. And so they requested the position that they need. For example, they wanted a technology teacher, the reading interventionist, the math interventionist.
So what I'm hearing here is, and then I'll get to you, Murphy, is basically, you know, when you're presented a budget, either at your workplace or at the state capitol or whatever, there's a narrative that goes with it that explains what's behind the numbers. And, you know, when, like, for instance, when I was on the town council, each page would have the budget for whatever department, and then there's an explanation page that's next to it that tells you what's behind those numbers. And I'm picking up from the questions that we're getting today that although these scenarios, we know a lot of work goes into them, to present us with scenarios, it's hard for people to wrap their heads around what the implications of that decision are without a little more information. Would people like that, a narrative that describes with each of these position, which with each of these proposed changes, what's behind that?
In the budget, we do put the narrative, so the budget-
Yeah, but for us to make a decision, it's hard to make a decision without that. Would that be helpful to folks?
Yes, definitely.
For our next discussion?
Yes.
Because it's hard when you're given a verbal explanation to remember all the reasoning behind them. So Murphy?
Go ahead.
Okay, so there, so my issue is, is we need to be able to present to the Board of Finance and the voters a number that they're willing to accept. And that means that even though frankly, I'm sure the high school and the middle school could use more educational resources, and if we wanted three more tutors, this is going to cost $100,000. Basically, that's what it says. Or we try and say, you know, get down to a budget number, I don't know, three and a half percent is possibly a number to work from. And if somebody says, "Well, three and a half percent is kind of an arbitrary number," he just reached up and pulled that out of the sky, "And we could really use three more tutors." Well, it's another $100,000, is basically. And we're not really educators. That's up to the superintendent and her staff and the principals of the schools to decide to do with educational resources. So in some ways, we give them $100,000 and say, "Do with $100,000 what needs to be done with $100,000. Maybe it's hire a social worker." So really, what we have to do is try and figure out what's a rational budget. And this is a guide to give us some idea of how we're going to get from, oh my God, nine point something percent, down to, you know, which is no way, no how, much as that, much as that, you know, has some justification, it's just not going to happen, down to a number that possibly can happen. Okay? I mean, one of the other questions that came up at the Board of Finance meeting here, or the, I'm sorry, the Audit and Finance Subcommittee meeting was, if we transition to a full day pre-K program, that's good for kids in the pre-K program, but it means fewer kids in pre-K, because instead of having two half-day classes, you got one full-day class. And so presumably, we would be able to serve fewer total children. Or perhaps not that many fewer. But at some point, if we're going to get $150,000 in savings out of the pre-K program, we might want an explanation of how that gets achieved and how many fewer students, because frankly, in this town, every single child that's three or four years old needs to be in a pre-K program, period. They, there are very few children in Wyndham that won't benefit from pre-K before kindergarten. I know it's not a statewide mandate, perhaps it should be, but we should have it here and we should be able to serve every child that wants it. Well, it's $150,000. Okay? So we need, but we still need to be able to figure out, okay, so how do we make sense getting down to three and a half percent or so?
Just to let, give you a drop against versus last year, the budget book that we presented was a 3.7% increase, and as soon as it got to the Board of Finance, it was knocked down to 3% arbitrarily, without even considering any of our educational needs.
That may be a good argument for what was just discussed about having a little paragraph or two to explain what each one of these things really means, so that you can say to the Board of Finance, "Okay, if you knock a half a million dollars out of this budget, you know, this is what you're going to end up knocking out."
The ramifications.
Or these are the kinds of, we're going to have to choose from this menu of things that are going to have to go. And, I mean, we just got a very logical and impassioned argument from the middle school governance council for resources for the middle school that would be very hard to come up with if the Board of Finance is going to chop $200,000 or $300,000 off the budget before they even look at it.
Okay. You have a, you want to say something?
Sure.
So this is a very difficult task, extremely very difficult task. You know, if you look at scenario one, it's a 9% increase. We gave everybody everything that they requested. Every single thing is in scenario one. But reality is, the board have to give us guidance of where, there's guidance that we don't want to have a budget that have more than 3%. So we can't get everything under 3%. So we have to make some decisions. So let's look at the middle school. Does the middle school need an administrator? Definitely. So we have to make a decision. I have to make a decision, do I give the middle school an administrator, or I let maybe a secretary go? And so based on the crisis of the middle school, I will, I don't want to use crisis. Based on the issues of the middle school, that will make more sense. So we have gone from maybe taking away a tutor from the high school, but we have given him two interventions.
Yeah, but a budget narrative would explain that to us.
Would explain that, definitely.
So we can make better decisions.
But the issue is, we can't get everything with a 3% increase that everybody wants to have.
Also-
Right. I mean, I think, I think the board just really needs to know, be more informed about these decisions. And I think, you know, there could be other school governance councils who are watching this today who come to us at the next meeting and say, "We want this." I mean, I don't know what's going to happen, but it's very important for us to know what the trade-offs are of the decisions we're making. Mark, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. I can't agree more with you. It goes back to my previous comment about lack of data. Very difficult for me to vote on a $80 million to $60 million budget based on a rough summary like this. We need a 180-page budget book that has everything laid out.
We have it for you, Mark.
You have it, I don't.
But it has to be-
I need to know the ramifications of some of this. We're not going to touch this classroom, but we're getting rid of paraprofessionals, which I think is very integral to the classroom. We're getting rid of tutors. We're getting rid of a reading teacher. We're going to get rid of a technology teacher.
No, we're not getting rid of a reading teacher.
Well, that was budget projections two was a negative $87,862 for a reading teacher in scenario two.
Remember, we're not getting rid of any of these people, so we vote on it.
Removing the position.
Potentially, we could.
Again, I don't know what we're doing, because I don't see the details. I can't agree with you more than we need details.
Next week, we present the budget to you.
And we need not to really discuss whether the Board of Finance will accept a 3% or 7% or 9%. That's not the discussion we need to have tonight. We need to talk about the budget. And down the line, Murphy, we can talk about, will they accept a 3%? Will they accept a 4%? This board has gotten money. This board has gotten $500,000 for books off the budget, in addition to the 2% or 3% they got from, we haven't always been starved. We can't continue to cry that they starve us, they starve us, they starve us, because that isn't always the case. But I need to know how we're spending this money. I need to know the big picture. Tracy brings up a point about the tutors, they were told, well, they came out of this school, but maybe they go to that school. How do I know? Three tutors and paraprofessionals at the middle school may do a whole lot more to that school than adding an administrator. Because part of the problem is diversifying education, taking these five kids who can't read at grade level and putting a tutor with them to bring them up to a grade level so they aren't disruptive in the class. It's the basics of the education, is diversification in the classroom. I can't do that if I don't have a paraprofessional and a teacher working together to divide a class of 25 kids. So I need to know these details. This is, we can't continue like this.
Would it be possible for us at the next workshop to have that fuller budget for us to wade through? I know you're trying to give us a-
We're trying to get the book out, and that's part of the bottom-line mentality that we're trying to drive here, is that we can present you the exquisite detail of 150-page budget book with staffing, with all the numbers, but we first just have to make a decision, is 3.8 a good starting point for us? Because remember, we're going to be asked to go down. Last year, we started at 3.6. Is 3.8 a good starting point?
I think what you're hearing from people, though, is that it's hard to decide what number we want to land on without knowing more about what's behind those numbers.
And I can provide that.
We can provide that. We can give you that.
It's, I know it's worked.
It's sort of like the chicken and the egg, what comes first?
Right. But, but we're hearing that, I'm hearing from people at this table that they want to be able to make a better informed decision, and all those gory details with those numbers would be, I think, more helpful for folks. They could take it home, they can wade through it, they can come prepared with questions at the meeting. Yeah, who had their hand up next? I think it was Mary and then Mike.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to point out that, you know, having secretaries, reducing secretaries, that, that work does not disappear. So somebody else will be burdened with those tasks. And, you know, we see that again and again, where there's a position, they're, they retire, other people have the work put on them, and it's very inefficient to work, to operate in that way. I just don't see how the schools can function. We have had many years of flat funding, 1%, very low things. I mean, it's really dug us into a rut. And it's really unfair to say we can never get 9% or 4% or, so we really are in kind of a rut where we never get a reasonable budget. And these cuts, I do think this, again, I'm stunned by this number for special ed, both transportation and the out-of-district tuition, which is almost $5 million. And I don't see how we can't do that. And without the trauma of separating children from their families by sending them away. So, and then when we get rid of the secretaries, we're going to be calling this Delta T for temps to come in. And that costs more, because we're paying administrative costs to another company. I just don't know where to start with this.
Special is about what, the budget, 25% of the budget is special ed? Special is about 25% of the total budget.
Highest percentage in the state, I think.
Yeah, 25% of the budget is special ed.
I think IDA grant is about just under $1 million, and then we spend another 12.
Yeah, 14 million in special ed.
Mike had a question, did he?
Yeah, I mean, kind of a question, well, more of a statement. I mean, we're sitting here talking about this, and like Mark said, we really don't have the numbers. We don't, we're shoveling water against the tide right now. And like Ilda said, it, we don't need a, I mean, I don't need a full book, even if we got it electronically, but we need it before the next, you can't come to the next meeting with 150 pages. If we got it before, gives us, you know, a couple weeks to go over it, some, you know, a week even, to go over it, so we know what we're talking about. And then we sit down, we have, you know, we can make a list.
We have about a month before we have to hand it off to the-
A month for Friday, it has to be to the-
Right. Has to be to the Board of Finance.
This is just wasting, not wasting time.
We do, we do have a budget calendar that we're working off of. I think, I think, you know, we don't need to discuss this point anymore. I think it's pretty clear that we want more of a budget book to, and I think the idea of sending it electronically to us so that we can look through it before-
Save money, too.
Before the next meeting would be terrific. And come prepared with questions and suggestions. And knowing that we do have to eventually make decisions about, you know, what, you know, what percentage increase we're going to be asking for when we go to the Board of Finance. But we don't know whether it'll be 3.8 or-
4.2.
4.2 or 1.7. I mean, we just don't know until we have more details. Does everybody, can everybody agree on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Frankly, I would like to get the budget numbers in a spreadsheet format, so I can pull out numbers, color numbers, edit, you know, mark it up. If it comes as a PDF, you pretty much, you can read it, but you can't do much to it. If it comes as a spreadsheet, you know, you can make a copy of it, and then you can mark it up, you can pull things out of it, you can, you can change totals and see what happens to the bottom line. So if you can send it to us as a spreadsheet.
I prefer a PDF, honestly, because there are so many formulas in there that, I mean-
But don't send the formulas, just generate the output. You can generate the output without, just numbers in a spreadsheet.
No problem. Range value, you're saying, it range value the formulas, just to give you the numbers.
Yeah, in a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Now, I don't want, I don't want the background formulas in the thing. I just assumed you just said, you know, dump out, but if I have it in a spreadsheet format-
Versus a PDF, flat file.
Then I can mark it up myself.
Okay.
It's, the only, well, okay, that's fine, I can do that. I mean, Dr. Garcia says that it's okay.
We'll figure out a way to get it, something to us electronically.
With narrative.
I think for the people that are less used to working in that, I'll just give it in a PDF, but for Dr. Sewell or anybody else who wants it that way, I can do it.
Some of us would just like the PDF with the narrative description of what it is we're looking at. Okay?
Well, hey, it's just digital stuff. Do it both.
It may not-
But we're saying we can do, he's saying he can do both.
No, I mean, it can be done both ways.
Jaime?
Very quick comment here, okay. It's scenario two, I think, and that's a type, I think somebody mentioned it before, you know, the number is in parentheses. That should not be.
That generally means a negative.
Yeah, it's a negative, no. Okay, and something else I want, yes?
Go ahead.
You know, I'm wondering about this, you know, scenario one, we have 2,232 benefits. We also have tuition, 705,000, but let's, let me ask about the benefits. Are they for sure 2,000? Is this a fixed number that we know of right now?
I believe we are getting some additional information.
We're getting more information.
We're getting more information, but this could be less.
Yes.
Could be less.
Because that number has not been taken off any other scenario. Okay?
No, no, yes.
Yeah, we did take, we took it off, yeah. We took 500,000 off.
It's scenario five, 648,000.
We're working very hard to get the real numbers on the benefits.
Now, what is the tuition? Who do we pay tuition for on this increase of 300,000?
Well, this is the tuition increase on a couple of different grounds. Number one, we're thinking of, because of the students at the PATH Academy, is it the STEPS? I mean, it's STEPS, right?
Yeah.
That we might substitute tuition as opposed to having a facility there.
No, this is not that tuition, Tracy. That's a situation, this is general, special ed tuition.
It's special ed and regular ed.
Special ed tuition, not a tuition.
But we said tuition would increase because the STEPS program would be migrated.
No, 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 but this is tuition.
He's talking about scenario one.
It's scenario one tuition.
But who do we pay tuition to?
We pay tuition to out-of-towns.
Out-of-town.
But also, we're adding another classroom at, a catapult at the, at Natchog. So both of those are driving tuition costs up.
And this is an increase in tuition of 700,000 through the previous year? That's a lot, you know, that's a big increase.
Yeah.
How much do we pay? How much?
That's the four classrooms.
Usually a 3% increase in tuition for special ed placement. It's a 3% increase.
And even regular tuition gets increased, like Easttown Magnet Schools.
Magnet School.
700,000 is equivalent to a 3% increase from previous year. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Kind of.
I believe some of it's special ed and some of it's regular.
Some of it's regular.
So I'm not sure if it's 3% across the board.
Some of it's students choosing.
I would have a lot of that.
No, okay. I mean, I think I have one more. Or maybe not, okay?
Okay.
That's fine.
So, so folks, are, are there any more questions on this, this packet that was given to us for tonight? I really think that we need to just have a lot more discussion once we get the, the full budget to wrap our heads around.
The next meeting's next Wednesday at 7:00.
Right. On the 20th is our next meeting. Remember, we're having more meetings now that we're in budget season. It was on the calendar. It's not a regular meeting. It's one of the meetings that we scheduled at the beginning of this whole budget process for us to be talking about budget next week.
But it is open to the public.
It is open to the public, right. It's not a special session behind closed doors. No, it's open to the public.
I guess, I have one question. When you put together the, at least the initial electronic copy of the budget, there's some question about exactly what the benefits line ought to be. But the rest of them maybe ought to start with where you were in scenario one. And then mark off the, mark off the things that, that you think you can redo. Well, I mean, because, you know, at some point, you've got a reduction of IT capital requests, for example. And rather than having them just disappear, I think we'd like to know, I'd like, I think we'd like to see and, and be able to ask, okay, what just got reduced there? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, the specific of it, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, descriptions will be forthcoming.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I know Rita and Chris are gonna have to both be working in.
For getting us to this point because even though you only see these scenarios, there's a lot of detail behind that.
That's the work.
The detail that Mark is talking about that supports trying to get the entirety of the school budget by school, by location, by central office, by department, together, and get it to a certain number. So, you know, you'll clearly have more information. I know it's not available at this point, but we're hoping by Friday, we'll have something to give to you.
We'll get it. And, and, and only then, when we have, began having this discussion and we all wrap our heads around it, can we talk about, so what do we do about the request from the Wyndham Middle School School Leverness Council? How do we want to deal with that? How does that fit into the equation?
Everything's a trade-off.
Right.
You have to, you have to give something to get something, so.
So we, so we'll add it in the request. We'll put it in the request and then you guys, the board, can make a decision.
Okay.
We'll put it in the request.
That would be really good.
Put it in the request.
Okay. And so we're gonna continue this discussion. This will be the agenda item next week on March 20th. The main agenda, I mean, February 20th. The main, the main agenda item. There may be something else that we have to add or need to add, but the focus will be on the budget. So please come prepared with your priority questions or suggestions, okay? I appreciate you all. This is a hard, this is hard work and I know staff puts a lot of time in to get this together for us.
Including Janet Testa.
But I think, but I think we all, we're gonna have a good discussion next week, okay?
One more thing, please?
Yes, Jaime?
I wish you checked about the tuition with 705,000 because if that is a 3% of what it usually is.
It's more than that.
It's, it's quite high.
Yeah, but 3% is standard.
Very, very, it's a standard.
Standard, 3% for special ed tuition, out-of, out-of district, 3% is very standard.
So that is the increase.
Okay.
For the year, okay?
Yeah, that's the total increase for tuition between regular and, and special ed.
Okay. We're on to committee reports. Finance and Audit Committee, anything to report?
Finance and Audit met this evening, as you can imagine. Part of our meeting about the budget process that we just spent a lot of time on, so I don't need to repeat that. But a couple of meetings ago, there was a concern raised about the rate of spending in the present year's budget. And so it looks like, basically, the state is going to come through with the money for the STEPS Academy, including support for the students, the educational cost-sharing support for the students. And, and with a couple of other things, I think we've pretty well resolved the questions that were raised about that deficiency. Is that your understanding, sir?
Yes, Dr. Sewell, that is.
So we've, we've got, we've, we've pretty much, you know, taken that down to a manageable tiny number. And then we'll see as we go through the rest of the school year whether we manage to keep it that way. The other thing that we looked at was the, the, the capital improvement budget, which we also have to submit to the Board of Finance next month. And the big issues on that are, we have two elementary school buildings with leaky roofs. Wyndham Center School and North Wyndham School. And the question is, how long can we go? We, we need to replace at least one of those roofs quickly, like in the next year, and perhaps both of them. So one of the questions that, that we don't know the answer to, we're, we're financing audit, is the engineering question of how, how much, how, how badly are those roofs leaking? If we waited two years to do one of them, how much risk are we taking that we have even more problems, more expensive problems than if we took care of them in the next year? Is that a reasonable?
If you were there. I, I, I think the sooner the better. I mean, if your, your house is roof leaking, you're not gonna wait a year or two years to fix the roof. And that's what we have to look at our buildings as, you know.
It would be better to fix them right away, is what you're saying.
Right.
Okay. So if we can, we'll have to deal with the Board of Finance and have a discussion about the, that. But, so that's where we are on that. And we don't have any budget transfers, at least this month.
Any questions? Okay, School Planning and Design Committee, Tracy?
Yep, we met last Thursday. Thank you to Ms. Testa for always reminding me to get an agenda out on time. And we discussed different things that are going on in the buildings. The maintenance building is almost complete up there. They're hoping for a temporary certificate of occupancy soon. One of the things that's going to be a little bit delayed is the cement and the pavement because it's been so cold. You have to do that when it's warm. A lot of the pavement companies aren't producing pavement right now. And the roof leaking at both the schools. I was under the impression through the former board architect that the Wyndham Center roof was in worse condition. So that's something that Dr. Garcia is gonna check on for us and get back to us on. We also talked about things that are up and coming. The RFQ should be in for the architect firm that we put out to look at the facilities building redesign on February 20th or 22nd, whichever that Friday is. So by our next meeting, we're not having a second meeting this month, but by our next meeting, we should have an update on what the bids were and stuff like that. So hopefully, I can bring that forward to you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Is there anybody who has any questions?
Tyler Griffin from the Board of Finance attends all of our School Planning and Design Committee meetings. He's having a hard time making it here for 5:00. So I'd like our meetings to start at 5:15 if there's not a problem. If there's no reason not to change it.
Technical problem?
Well, I'd have to officially change it on the website and, and file and stuff like that. But if there's no objections, Mr. DeZoniers?
Yeah, I, I would, I was gonna ask you about that as well. I have an extremely hard time making it for 5:00.
What time would be better for you?
Any, anytime a little later. Workday usually gets out at 5:00.
Do you want to say 5:30?
5:30?
Yeah, that would be, that would be better.
I can sympathize with that. Getting, getting into town and getting to a meeting is hard.
Where I work now, I work till 5:00, too. So I don't have a problem moving it back to even 5:30 with that.
So as long as we do legally what we need to do to make that change.
So, yeah, I'd like to let you guys know, until we get stuff back from the architect and a consulting company that Dr. Garcia would like to hire, I think that has to go out to bid probably. But still, until we get that back, we're just gonna do one meeting a month. Because that second meeting was supposed to be focused strictly on the facilities master plan.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Ms. Testa, can you help me get the 5:30 meeting time? Thank you.
Jaime?
Yeah, can I ask about the new, the, the, the new school, the renovation? Is that part of this or not?
You can ask me about that. Mary and I sit on the committee, so.
Do we have the money for this renovation secured somewhere? Because I read yesterday that the new, the new budget, the governor's new budget is coming next week. And, and this is, it might have a big reduction in school bonding. Okay, so how is ours faring here? Do we already have that money? Do we have it secured somewhere?
The money was supposed to be bonded la, well, was bonded last year by the state. So the 87, the 87 million is already approved.
Go back.
Well, there's nothing saying he can't go back and touch it if he wants to, but the money was already approved, so he'd have to go and change that number.
I mean, he is, he is saying he's gonna put us on a debt diet.
Right.
And, and he has canceled the bond commission meetings for the next couple of months. And the budget comes out on the 20th. We'll know a lot more then. But, but for future projects, that is a concern. For towns and, and boards of ed about bonding is, is, is gonna be a concern, but.
This one, it, okay.
And this was put on the Building Committee's agenda. We're meeting on Tuesday because Monday's a holiday. So it's put on the Building Committee's agenda to discuss on Tuesday at 7:00 over in central offices in the conference room there. If anybody wants to come and, you know, we can't change what the governor's gonna do, but we're gonna discuss the impact it may have on our project.
When is the budget coming up?
The governor is submit, is, is, is releasing his budget on February 20th. That's not the final budget.
Yeah, right, but that's.
But that's his, his budget. Legislature gets their hands on it.
That's his scenarios here.
So the Building Committee's not unaware of what's going on, but the 87.6 million has already been bonded by the state. So it would take quite a bit to reduce that, but to get any further funds will be a challenge.
Mike?
Well, the way, the way I just read, read this whole deal is they did put provisions in there to cut on already bonded projects. And if that happens with the way we took this vote in this town, then this town would be, on the taxpayer, would be on the hook for all that money. So if they're worried about a 9% raise, increase, hold on.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, we're not, he's not gonna go back and claw back money for school projects that are already in the works.
Approved, approved.
Right, yeah. So let's, let's cross that bridge when we come to that, if that happens. Policy Committee?
Yes.
Anything to report, Ela?
We did not meet last month, so therefore, we do not have a, a report. Our next meeting is the 28th, two weeks from tomorrow at 5:30. If anybody wants to join us, Policy Committee meeting? Thank you. We meet in the central office.
Okay. The Executive Committee, oh, any questions? Executive Committee, we met last Wednesday. The topic, the topics on the agenda included prepar, you know, budget preparation. We focused mostly on the health, the self-insured health insurance plan in that discussion. We also talked about legislation, which, which is on the agenda under possible action items. There are a number of bills being proposed at the legislature this year that might be of interest to us. And so that's, that's what we talked about. Nothing to report other than that. I do want to, not, not for discussion, but the, the, I meant to hand this out last month. This is the superintendent's evaluation tool that we, we all agreed on. I mean, the, the, the final version of it. So if anybody wants to take a copy and we can talk about it at another time, but not right now because we're just doing reports.
Doesn't the board have to approve this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're not, it's not on for taking action tonight. Okay? You got two copies? Okay. So any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's on, under action items.
Okay. Have you sent you a, a scan?
It's on, it's, it's on night, the next item under.
Under action item.
Discussion and possible action.
Okay, see.
Okay.
Let it see.
Okay. Any other questions for me or the Executive Committee? Okay. So we're on to action items and we have the second reading of the Board Policy Instruction Graduation Requirements, the Seal of Biliteracy. So this is the second reading. We can take action tonight. I'd entertain a motion.
I move, we approve Board Policy 6146, Seal of Biliteracy.
Second from Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mark is absent for the vote, just so you don't. Okay, next item, Recommended Approval of Certification of National School Launch Program.
They'll move.
Second.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Murphy. Any discussion?
Dr. Garcia, is this the same amount that we applied for last year or is it a different amount?
It's the same amount. But they can't, yeah, it's the same amount.
I know it's a yearly thing. I, I read the packet and stuff like that. I just didn't know if the amount had changed, that's all.
Any, any more discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous with Mark absent again. So Discussion and Possible Action to Register Support or Opposition to State Legislative Proposals. I just wanted to bring this to you and we discussed this at the Executive Committee meeting. It was in your packet. There's a handful of bills that have been proposed by the legislature. I looked, I checked on all of these today. None of them have been raised to be drafted as a full language bill yet. And none of them have been raised for public hearing yet. At all, at, at this point, they are all just these pretty much one-sentence descriptions that are proposed, that have been proposed. So my question is, when you looked through here, is there anything that we might, if it comes up for a public hearing, that you might like us to submit testimony in support of or against? Should they come up for a public hearing? I don't know whether you had a chance. The first one was establishing a dual-language magnet school in Wyndham. The next one was funding for alliance districts that offer early college opportunities. There was one requiring education cost-sharing grants to be paid directly to the Board of Education for an alliance district.
That would be nice.
Yes.
There was an act concerning funding for reimbursement of special education costs. We're not really sure what's behind that, but it's interesting that it's put in by the President of the Senate and has a zillion senators on it. There was one increasing ECS funding to account for changing populations. That was put in by the New Haven delegation. My assumption is that it's to make sure that districts who have an influx of students actually, you know, a shift in student population get what they need.
Which would include us.
Right, yeah. An act concerning Board of Education membership that would say that the chief elected official of a town appoint the chair push person of the local Board of Education.
No.
That's by the majority leader, I mean, the deputy in the Senate, leader in the Senate. So I, I don't, I, you know, I, I don't know what he's thinking, but.
That's, 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 that's Norwalk.
Norwalk.
Norwalk, and we know, we know why, we know why.
And then there was an act concerning accountability report on the status of alliance districts and commissioners' network schools, which is probably just asking for some report on how they're doing. An act concerning school building project grants. This is put in by the Mansfield delegation and I'm assuming it's because of something they want to do up there about allowing school building projects for municipalities.
Actually, that would help us out.
That construct multi-use facilities that meet both the needs of school districts and the local community.
You have two gyms and a swimming pool.
And there's an act concerning guidelines for increasing diverse teaching populations on recruitment and retention, recruitment and hiring of minority teachers. on recruitment and retention, recruitment and hiring of, uh, minority teachers, and one concerning professional certification for bilingual education teachers from another country. So, um, but the point is, I want to make, is that these are all individual bills out there, and until the education, they've all been referred to the education committee, but until the education committee decides to raise them for a public hearing or draft them in language, there's no there there yet. Is there anything that grabs your fancy, that you think, uh, we should weigh in on? Because I, I'm happy to write and submit testimony on our behalf, or any of you could too, but.
Well, certainly the magnet school.
The dual language, yeah.
Dual language magnet school bill, probably the most important thing on the list for our, from our point of view.
The alliance, the alliance funding.
Okay, well, so, so people are throwing out things that they're interested in, we could do this as individuals, or we could take a vote as a board to support things. If you don't feel ready today, I could certainly just let you know when something becomes real, um, like it's, there's going to be a public hearing on it.
Right.
And I could send an email out to you, and you guys could weigh in with me.
That would be the better way to do it, I think.
Yeah.
We could go on for another half hour about each of these bills.
Right.
And Dr. Sewell has something to say.
They're only one-sentence, uh, descriptions, so, so we don't know what's behind it, right?
But our, but our local state representative, Mrs. Johnson, Ms. Johnson is a senior member of the education committee, and she's kind of easy to get a hold of if you want to lobby her directly on one or more of these bills.
Well, so you all have them now. Uh, these may be winnowed down to three or four things that actually go to public hearing. So would you like me to just send an email out to all of us if something happens with some of them? And then we'll cross that bridge.
The other thing to think about.
And then in the meantime, feel free to talk to anybody about any, any of the legislators you know about this. Go ahead.
So, last year, I, I accompanied, I went along with, uh, with, um, Judge O'Brien to testify on a couple of bills before the legislature, you know. So they have public hearings, and it, if people show up and say something to the legislature, or there's, there are people from a community that, that will come and actually take the time to speak on a bill, it could have, you know, some influence in terms of, so if, for example, they have, uh, a raised bill for the idea of the dual-language magnet, uh, school, uh, it would probably be useful if as many of us as could find the time to, to spend a few hours at the, uh, legislative building testifying, to, to get in line to testify.
We'll, we'll let you know, okay?
That's true.
Great. Uh, so the next item is discussion and possible action to approve Wyndham school, high school specs. So we have the document here, I posted it as possible action to approve, doesn't mean that we'll be ready necessarily to approve it tonight, but, but we're going to, we're going to hand it out, and we're going to get highlights shared with us.
I'm going to share some highlight with you, and if you want it electronically, we'll be happy to give it to you electronically.
My first question is, is there a?
It was added to the agenda, it was an updated agenda on Monday.
We had an updated agenda. It's X, see, X and XI.
What'd you say, Mur?
Before the cap.
I want to do.
Yeah, I thought I printed out the correct one.
It's actually easier for me to read it on the tablet.
Right, yeah, because that's all you're missing right there.
Yeah.
To propose executive session. That's what that is, yep. Oh, it is, it's right there. What is this? Oh, geez.
Wait, we're in the middle of the.
What is this called? I know. Can't take no action on this.
Appendixes?
No way. We can't take action on this today?
No.
Okay, I'm done.
That's crazy. If I may say, while we're handing this out, there's no way I'm going to be ready to approve this tonight.
I know. Just, just to cover.
Possible, but.
Is there no appendix A?
Posing.
Thank you.
Let's take this home and.
Not yet.
You know.
This is what we, this is what we got now?
Okay, folks.
Order in the court.
Can I call this meeting back into order? We have the packet in front of us, so, um, I'm going to, who is going to be running us through this?
Okay, so I don't, I don't think you want to go through all of this tonight.
No, but.
Okay. So I want, with, I, before, before we start, I'd like you to put draft on this big one here, just put draft.
It's on every page inside.
Oh, I, I, I don't have my contacts, I can't see. Okay, okay, okay.
It says draft on every, draft number one on every.
Oh, yeah, it does, yeah.
I, I want to start by giving a big thank you to the high school administrative team, um, members, uh, the teachers also, uh, the central office staff that work on this, uh, Mr. Paris, Margaret, and Collier, the, um, owners rep that worked diligently with us. I just want to know that we have gone from this spec. This is the spec that you approved two, three years ago? To this spec, a hundred and sixty pages. So we have gone from this to this, over, over the work. It's still in draft form, the team will meet once again next week.
Okay.
Uh, to put some final changes before bringing it to you for the board. Some areas that still need to be included in the, in the draft that are not there is the spec for the cafeteria, uh, they're not there yet. Uh, preschool and central office spec need to be combined, they're not in there yet. The appendix for space use, uh, Wayne and, uh, Friar is working and that is not inside there yet, and also the site survey for outside spaces, like the parking lot, is not in there. And we want to make sure that we review the alignment, uh, of the spec with the commissioner network and the career pathway. So these are a couple of things that are still, are missing, uh, to be included, but this is the bulk of the work. Um, we follow the model given to us by Collier, that is the model that they used in Branford. Uh, we also have a very inclusive process where the departments all met, they have a particular time, they all met, they all came down, went with the administrative team, uh, giving some guidelines, what back and wrote what they have to write, bringing back, and we have spent some time editing this process. So you will see that it's very, is a very extensive spec, uh, meet the guideline of the state. However, I do say there are some areas that are missing that we still need to include, like the outside space, the cafeteria, uh, and things like that are not included yet, and we're working, we will work in those next week. Um, there, there are some concern, um, on the, uh, in the design, and not necessarily in the spec, but in the design. And I guess the design will also, the new schematic design will change once the board approves this spec. The design that was there before, schematically, conceptually, was the design that matches this one, and so I guess there will be a new design once they look at this new spec. But, for example, where students are located, we, we noticed that the majority of students are located in the second floor, and that's a concern for us. Uh, pre-K is on the first floor, but pre-K needs to be on the first floor by law, they cannot be on, on, on the second floor. On the Board of Education are, on the first floor, but we don't have students per se except for pre-K on the first floor, and so that's a little bit of concern for us. All the labs are upstairs, also ECO lab and those are upstairs, classes are upstairs, and I think we have not assigned here yet any space for high rolls, camino alto, okay? Um, like I said, I believe the original drawing were developed based on this, I think we'll have to go back and look at the drawing now, base, on this, and I think there will be some, some additional changes. Is there any question? I know you can, I don't want to go through everything that is here because it will take you a lot, but I, I'm very proud of the work that the team has developed at the central office. I think it answered all the question, uh, and all the, uh, the topics that Collier wanted us to, to include it. One of the things that was topic of discussion, however, a big topic of discussion when we're writing this was the enrollment, the enrollment for the high school. As you know, a couple of years ago, a study was done that said that the high school enrollment was declining. However, with the Puerto Rico students that came in a year ago, we have forty-two new students in the high school. So we went and put the current numbers, uh, and the projection that was done years ago show a declining enrollment of the high school, so we put some, we put some explanation in here to show that we do not have a declining enrollment at the high school. That's not taking place. However, this is not developed for eight hundred students, it does develop for, I believe, six hundred and twenty-five students.
So there are really two things we need to do. One is answer any immediate questions that people have, but we need to, before we move on today, you know, and to any other budget items tonight, we need to talk about the timing of when we could be ready to approve this and, and make sure we're all on the same page on that. So, um, does anybody have any immediate questions?
Yes, I need it. I have a comment. You know, I'm thinking about still the seven hundred thousand dollars increase in tuition. You're telling me that is three percent, but you know, seven hundred thousand dollars is a three percent of twenty-three million. Is that what we spent in a, in a?
Yes, yes.
In special ed?
Yes.
Twenty-five mil, yes, yes.
Twenty-five million, that's almost half of our, you would say?
Yes, yes.
Half of the budget is special ed? Yes.
Yeah, has been for you.
Dr. Garcia, how long have you been on this board?
But I just heard that you said twenty-five percent. Didn't I just hear that?
Twenty-five percent of our students are identified as special ed.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven percent of our students, thank you, are identified as special ed, taking up almost half of our budget, yes, that's what we've been saying.
Yeah. Okay. Welcome to the Board of Ed. So, I mean, I want to get back to the ed specs. Ed specs.
So I have what I think is a fairly obvious question. If the preschool is going to absorb all the classroom space on the first floor, and the high school is going to be on the second floor, how easy is it going to be to isolate the high school students from the pre-, I mean, they have to be able to get to the second floor, and, and yet we are, you know, we and the public are going to want isolation between the preschool and the high school, are we not? I mean, physical isolation.
That's just a first pass at the floor plan. Nothing has been approved by the Board of, by the building committee, because we didn't have this to be able to do it. We have ed specs, so to speak, on central office space, and definite ed specs on early childhood, and Aliki has been great, uh, meeting with the contractor and the architect. However, the extra space for now was just upstairs, and so he kind of bubbled in some places that could be labs, and could be this, and could be that. Nothing says that the entire high school is going to be isolated on the upper floor. There's administrative offices downstairs, and I think that we're going to find that Board of Ed and early childhood are going to have to sque-, I mean, yeah, Board of Ed and early childhood are going to have to squeeze a little bit, because the high school needs more space than what it's been allocated so far. But in the absence of ed specs, which, I don't know, you guys have never heard me say that we needed ed specs. In the absence of the ed specs, we had no, no.
Nothing to go with.
Specific planning to plan for, and.
So now it gets real.
Once the Board of Ed approves this, hopefully in two weeks, I'm hoping, then Bob Roach and Colliers can really get down to the nitty-gritty and the.
Well, I understand all of that. My, my question is, is, you know, there are limits to what architects can accomplish.
Yes.
I mean, there's a physical footprint here, and, you know.
You can key card in and out of the early childhood and have to key card the other way as well.
You can't override the laws of physics to, to make the space work.
Right.
There's a challenge.
And the problem is with the drawings is that.
It certainly is.
The cafeteria, the auditorium, the pool, the gym, all count as square footage, but they're big spaces that you can't use for a lot of other things.
And they can't be moved to the second floor.
Exactly, right.
Any other questions, comments, um, for tonight?
Yeah, I have a question.
Well, um, Mary had, Mary had her hand up.
No, I, I didn't have my hand up yet.
Well, I mean, you were. I can read body language when people want to speak. You, you, you had yours pretty good.
When we get into here, does this actually say how many classrooms, how, that the high school will have? How, how many math?
The space uses that we don't have in there will say that. There's an appendix, the space use will say.
I don't want to approve something that is going to say all of the high schools on the second floor.
No, 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 that's one of the ones that's missing, is the space use, and so that's going to be there when they finish it. And there's a concern from teachers about, uh, what we know is that every classroom is going to be used a hundred percent.
Well, what does that mean?
Well, that there will be a class in there all the time, the seven hours of the day.
I, I'm not sure that density and crowding are going to be a good thing. In a new high school, that is our dream for this generation, you know, we're, we're putting a lot of money, so I, I wonder when I hear a hundred percent of the time. I, I, that sounds like one of those number, that, one of those sayings that is covering up overcrowding and, and, you know, having a dusty art class, and then the next thing you're supposed to be doing Spanish. No, I don't agree with that.
And according to the state, uh, you have a range of about seventy to seventy-five percent of the time that the classroom need to be used, uh, seventy to seventy-five percent. Um, so one of the things that the building committee and that the board is that when we come back with the, the concept of this, is to look at that, that's one of the concern. Our classroom going to be used a hundred percent of the time? And if that's the case, then what were the, what space will teacher have, uh, to have their own space? Typically, the new construction, it doesn't, that's what we want, have a large classroom where teachers have different areas. So next week, when we have that meeting again with Collier and Friar, that's some of the question that we will be asking them. How is space, since we don't have the space uses in here yet, that would be one of the questions to ask them.
So, the hundred percent of the time.
Jaime had his question, Jaime had the next question.
Just, you know, I mean, how much, I, I was wondering, I just brought through this, how much of this are we really able to ascertain? Do you know, I mean, how, what do I know about, you know, the space for, uh, what is it? I just lost it, but, uh, councils, you know, the council of need to be in an office that have to be seven plus something plus something. I don't know anything about council. I mean, I have no idea what kind of offices they need, so how realistic can we come in order to approve something? Or I can say I approve when I don't know what is in it, or I don't know.
Okay, okay. There's, very good question. There's some guideline from the state, for example, what size a preschool classroom need to be, there're guidelines about, uh, what a regular classroom need to be, there is guidelines about what size a resource special ed room need to be, and so I, I can assure you that the architect and the, and the owners rep are following those guidelines by the state. Remember, remember that this has to go to the state.
So that is my question.
Yeah.
So if you can assure me, then I say, fine, I've been assured, okay? But I don't have to go, I don't have to go through. My point is that I, by reading this, I don't think I can be of any help. I do not know the specific needs. If I, if I'm asking, if anybody asks me something about my field of expertise, I could talk about it, but I couldn't, I probably will not be able to ascertain or to evaluate if a physics lab, you know, what are the dimensions of it.
Well, listen, not everybody on the board can be expected to know all this stuff, Jaime. Some of us are going to have to defer to other people on the board who know more about this than we do. And there are some people on the board who understand this and have more experience with us than, than we do, and also it has to be approved by the state, so in the end, whatever, whatever we vote to, to move on, we'll have the, have, have an overview from the state, and they know really, you know, what the, what the ed specs really have to address. So, and the architects will take it, and the building committee will look at it. So, um, are there any other points that we need to raise tonight? Oh, Murphy.
So I have a question about the hundred percent use of the classrooms. Does that include maintenance time? Because.
I don't, I don't know.
Because you can't, you, in, in a modern class, modern classrooms are loaded with technology. I mean, we got whiteboards and computers and all sorts, and, and the experience that we had at the university was, there has to be a period or two every week for people to go in to, 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 to keep the equipment working, because it's very disappointing to walk into a classroom expecting to use a piece of technology and find out that it's broken.
You don't know the.
So there has to be, there has to be regularly scheduled.
Maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, it has to be built in, like it's a class.
Let me get a question, let me get an answer to you next week. Like I said, next week we're meeting again.
When, when are you meeting?
I was, I don't know exactly what day they responded. Johnny, do you know what day they're still coming back next week? We don't have a meeting next week.
Anymore.
Meeting next week.
You've never seen Brendan text at two in the morning that he's at Barrett fixing something, or.
That's right.
And unlike a university, classes are from 7:30 to 3:00-ish. So, there's, you know, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock if they need to get in and plan maintenance. They can do that after school hours. There isn't usually a, a class at 9:00 o'clock at night or something like that in those bill, in those classrooms.
But I get that response next week.
He says preventative maintenance is scheduled during vacations.
So, so you're going to, the, the group is meeting again, again. The group is meeting again next week. We're going to get a chance to take this and look at it. So, what is a realistic date that we could have a discussion? And then what is a realistic date that we could approve this? Tracy, you put out that you think on the last, on the last meeting of the month, the 27th, that might be the time, two weeks from today?
That's generally a workshop meeting, so if we could do two workshops that day. I know we already have kind of the spring scheduled out, but if we can do two workshops, that gives everybody two weeks to read, either submit to Dr. Garcia, or that night bring questions, preferably.
And next week, get the, get the additional information that's not in this.
Right. That, that would be the biggest thing that would be holding us up, was the additional information.
And I, you know, if you have any question, if you could send it to me, I really appreciate it, because when we go to the meeting with the committee, then we could bring up those questions there.
We're also waiting for the 150 pages for the, for the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah?
We'll have a lot of reading.
Yes, we will.
Everybody, listen.
We don't have a problem, those readings.
When you run for the Board of Ed, you sign up to do some work, and this is part of what you need to do, so, okay?
Both of, so which one for next week?
Well, we have the budget scheduled for next week, but, but, but the 27th, which is our workshop meeting, would be the day when we might be ready to approve this, if we all take a look at it, okay?
Okay.
And, and, and please get your questions to Dr. Garcia.
Yeah.
So, if there are questions that you have in the interim, get them to us, okay?
I, I just appreciate it, if I may, Madam Chair, if you see something, just tell us page this under this section, that will help us when we meet with the team.
Okay.
Because we have over 160 pages here, and we have not finished yet.
Okay. Anything else on that? Yes?
If I may just add, we're also, because we brought this in from many, many different resources, so we're also working still on the formatting, so there may be some inconsistency that sometimes they're bullets and sometimes they're on paragraphs.
So, don't freak out about layout. So, we, we have an executive session that we need to go into, so don't get ready to walk out of the room. We have a public comment next on the agenda. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Kim? Okay. Somebody give her the mic back.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
I'll be quick, I'll be quick. You know, first I just want to say to everybody, thank you very much. I mean, obviously, there is a lot of material, and it's unfortunate that the timing, I think of the spec eds are coming out at the same time as the budget, so it's a lot to read, and it's daunting. But, you know, as a resident, I'm really counting on everybody to go through those spec eds, you know, even if you don't think you're going to understand 99% of it, you know, there could be one nugget of things that somebody's going to pick out. So, I just, as a resident, I just want to make sure that, you know, folks understand that I would expect that from you, and I just wanted to go and say that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yep, one more coming up.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Kristen DeGray. I'm a member of the Governance Council, but it was convenient that I, I am here because I am a math tutor at North Wyndham School.
Okay.
And I just wanted to tell you a little bit about what I do every day. I service 42 children in grades one through five. I push into classrooms, and I have small groups, three to five children, and I spend a half, a half hour with each group. And I service students that we identify as tier two, meaning that they're one grade level below. I'm not a certified teacher, but I can tell you that I work like one. I look at data, I do planning, I make sure my kids are engaged, I love my kids, I get to know my kids. And I know that personally, for me, the majority of my kids hit their end-of-year growth target after our mid-year testing. So, I know, Dr. Garcia, you mentioned that test scores don't necessarily increase with tutors, but I just wanted to say that, and I know tutors are used differently in each building, but in my building, we're very efficient. I also wanted to say that we did have a building sub at North Wyndham School, and she left, I'm not sure what the reasons were, but we've been told that we can't hire another. Even though it's not new spending, we've been told that we can't hire another. And because of that, me and the other tutors are pulled to substitute, and I'd say, I was substituting probably 25% of the time, but that is going to increase a lot without a building sub. So, I just want you to know that although we're not certified teachers, we're very much doing the work that needs to be done, and I'm really proud of what I do, and I love what I do, and I hope you can consider that when you're looking at these budget issues.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you speaking up. Okay, anybody else under public comment? You guys really stuck around a long time. Thank you, thank you for sticking around.
Usually, they speak and leave.
And, so.
Can I make a motion when we go into executive session to talk about personnel?
I have, I have exact wording. I need a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of reviewing an attorney-client communication concerning personnel matters.
So moved.
Seconded and seconded by Tracy and Mark. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Yeah. I was, I was in favor.
Okay.
I'm running to the ladies room.
It's unanimous. So, thank you, everybody who's here.